Good evening. I'd like to call to order the April 4th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. First tonight, we'll review and approve the agenda. I have a motion. Erica's second. Phil, all in favor? Thank you. And we have approval of the minutes from the March 21st meeting. A motion to approve. Brendan, second. Bob, all in favor? Thank you. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. We'll move right into reports and recognition tonight, and we have first an overview of the response to intervention program with Dr. Grunty.
Good evening. So nice to be here this evening, and thank you to a few of the coordinators who are here to help answer any questions that may come up in regards to response to intervention. Just as a reminder, we have Susan Bliss, who you all had the opportunity to listen to last Board of Ed meeting. Sarah Bros is our five through eight English Language Arts Coordinator. Nicole Graham is our K through eight math coordinator, and Melinda Meyer is our K through eight science coordinator. So we're happy to have them here this evening, and I know there's a few people that are out there watching virtually. So if we need to call in some lifelines, we're happy to do so for you as well. But anyway, this evening, I'm here to give you an overview of response to intervention. So this is our district goal, and the response to intervention goal, otherwise known as RTI. Tonight, I really hope to address the different components of this goal, but mainly to give you a better understanding of RTI and the importance that RTI plays in curriculum instruction and assessment. So what is RTI? RTI is a National General Education Initiative that highlights the importance of providing high-quality, evidence-based instruction to all students. The goal is to provide effective instruction and respond promptly to students who may have difficulties in the core learning areas of numeracy, literacy, and social behavior. In Connecticut, this framework is also referred to as scientifically research-based intervention. But like all things in New Canaan, we tend to do it just a tad bit different. And we have what we call response to intervention. And so when the state of Connecticut was going through their mandate in about 2008, the New Canaan Public Schools got together, had a district committee come together, and we actually wrote our own response to intervention guidebook that still stands to today with revisions along the way. So what is it meant when we say continuum of support? The learning needs of eighty to ninety percent of our student population will be met in our general education curriculum and instruction. Ten to twenty percent of our student population will need additional supports and intensive interventions to reach some of the levels of achievement. And what this model is representing is that each student will get the supports that they need in order to be successful. So RTI grew out of research suggesting that traditional approaches to identifying students with learning disabilities were flawed, and that sometimes students ended up in special education due to other factors such as inadequate general education practices and limited opportunities for extra help. So RTI gives multiple levels of general education support to our students. It is not a pre-referral process for special education, and it focuses on academic and social emotional growth. So tier one instruction. So RTI is in three different tiers, and I'm going to talk about each of the tiers and what each of those tiers entail. So tier one instruction is what happens in every classroom. It is the high-quality instruction curriculum and assessment, and it's to assure that all students are meeting grade-level benchmarks in the domains of literacy, numeracy, and social emotional learning. The results of these grade-level benchmarks are reviewed at least three times a year in what we call a universal screening team meeting, which is basically a data team meeting. We establish what the grade-level goal would be, and then we analyze the results. Oftentimes, we're looking at the big picture of how is a grade level doing? How is a school doing? How is an individual classroom? And then certainly, how is the individual performance of every single student in that classroom doing in accordance to the benchmark that's been established? So when we talk about our tier one instruction, we're going to talk about the literacy, the numeracy, and the social emotional learning. And so it's really important that you have high-quality instruction and curriculum and assessments to assure that our students are getting a solid reading foundation. So these are the essential components of reading. And reading starts with phonemic awareness. And that refers to that ability to focus on and manipulate phonemes in spoken words. So it's all what they hear and then how they manipulate those sounds. There's no letters put in front of them or words put in front of them. It's all done through that oral sound. It's oftentimes what you would do with a preschool or with rhyming games or nursery rhymes. It's all in how they manipulate and hear those sounds. That's all the phonemic awareness. The next piece is the phonics. The phonics is when you have those relationships between the letters and the combinations of those letters and how those letters make words, and that each of those letters have a specific sound, and each of those sounds combined together make up words. And it's how they use these relationships to learn how to read and spell. So when you look at phonemic awareness and you look at phonics, that is really critical to the success that students will have in later years in reading. So we really work hard in our primary grades to make sure that we've got a strong phonics program for our students. So in grades K through three, actually, we do a foundations program which really reiterates all the different phonics rules that they learn, and they learn how to apply them. They learn how to apply them with reading, and then they also learn how to apply them with spelling. As you certainly continue in K through three, and then certainly all the way up through eighth grade, the development of fluency is really important. And fluency can be looked at two different ways. The way that fluency is looked at here is how they read appropriately at a certain speed, with a certain accuracy, and they have proper expression. We also know that sometimes fluency can play an impact if kids can't do rapid letter naming or they can't do rapid letter naming of sounds. And so sometimes those are early warning signs for us that when we're assessing kids and working with kids and phonemic awareness and phonics, that sometimes those are warning signs that somebody might have some difficulty with learning how to read. And so there's little things that we look at and we assess our kids on so that we can try to help and instruct them on learning all of those skills that are necessary. Vocabulary is obviously closely related to comprehension. The larger the vocabulary a child has, the easier it is for them to comprehend texts that they're reading. And then comprehension is at every grade level. It's at the heart of reading. It's the complex cognitive process that readers use to understand what they read. So those are the different components of reading instruction. We have a strong curriculum that supports all of these components, and then we have assessments, which I'll get into, that we utilize to determine if students are making progress in these particular areas. We also have the essential components of math where you talk about number concepts. And that's that counting, that place value, that one-to-one correspondence. It's the patterns. So we do, in our K through two classrooms, we have something called number corners that helps us to reinforce all these basic skills every single day. How do you skip count? What's the number that came before? What's the number that came afterward? What's the day of the week? What's the pattern that we might be seeing? Let's talk about how many days we've been in school or how many days there are in this month. Oh, we've hit the tenth day. That's a group of ten. Let's put that into our count, and let's make that over into a ten block. It's all those number concepts. The other piece that's really important is that basic fact recall. And so we do teach our kids to have fluency in their basic facts. So obviously, up through second grade, you're really working on the basic facts of addition and subtraction. You'll start in first grade where you're going to know those basic facts from one to ten, whether you're adding or subtraction. In second grade, you'll move up to the basic facts, one through twenty, and then you shift over in third grade to multiplication and division. And that continues right in through fifth grade. In addition to the basic fact recall, it's also the computation procedures and the fluency that they have in the computation procedures. And that's when you're adding two-digit numbers that aren't your basic facts. So what's thirty-nine plus forty-six? And you have the skills to be able to do that quickly, and that's the fluency that we do with our students. And then the biggest piece of the math is the problem solving. So how do they determine the operations to solve a word problem? How do they utilize their math vocabulary? And certainly, we have a different way of assessing that K through eight with our students. The next piece, this should look very familiar to you from two weeks ago when Susan Bliss did her presentation, is our social, academic, and personal learning. And that's the framework that we look at when we're looking at the self-awareness, the self-management, the responsible decision-making, the relationship skills, and the social awareness. Our K through five report cards have indicators in all of those areas. On the K through five report cards, we group self-awareness and self-management together. So we're looking at can kids follow written and oral task directions? Can kids take responsibility for their own actions? Can they complete their assignments in an appropriate time? When you start to move into the social awareness and relationship skills, do they respond appropriately to feedback? Do they show respect towards peers? Do they practice kindness? Are they able to demonstrate an awareness of the feelings and opinions of others? And then there's also the category of decision-making and problem-solving. Do they persevere when tasks are difficult? Do they use positive solutions to solve problems and conflicts? Are they able to work independently? So those are all the sample skills that are also part of that tier one instruction in addition to obviously the emotional intelligence that Susan talked about last week. So we instruct. We use high quality. We have high-quality curriculum. We have high-quality instruction. And so then the next piece of it is assessment. So you have to assess your students. So we assess our students at least three times a year on what we call benchmark assessments. That doesn't include all the formative assessments that happen throughout the course of a year. So a benchmark assessment is something that's a little bit larger that you give to students. So in the early grades, in the K two, we use the DIBELS, which is the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. And I do have to tell you how to look that up because we never ever refer to that. We always just refer to DIBELS. It's just the acronym. And I have to tell you that I probably didn't remember what DIBELS actually stood for until I looked it up, but wanted to be prepared in case someone says, what does DIBELS stand for? But that's where you're really testing their letter naming and can they do phonemic segmentation? Can they do correct letter sounds? That's all that assessment at that phonemic and phonological awareness. We also look at our foundations unit assessments. So after they finish every unit in foundations, there's an assessment that the teachers give to the kids, quick little assessment, and we always spiral back. If kids are not meeting that eighty percent on that assessment, that means that they didn't master what was taught. And so the teacher has to spiral back to reteach that. We also have what we call the Benchmark Assessment System, otherwise known as the BAS. And the BAS gives us that fluency. So how well are they reading? Are they reading at the appropriate speed? Are they reading with the appropriate accuracy? Are they comprehending what they read and what is their vocabulary like? So that's taking it to one step further beyond the skills. And then we also have our NWEA assessment. NWEA is not used as a benchmark assessment, but it's used to help triangulate some of the data. And then in math, we have our benchmark assessments. Once again, this might be two or three units that have been combined together, and then they have a benchmark assessment on the two or three units that they've been instructed in. We create our own benchmark assessments in math, and we're constantly looking at the performance on those and how well our students did. We also have basic facts and computation sets that we ask our students to do. We also do exemplars in grades K through five, and that's really testing that level of problem-solving and how well they know their vocabulary. And then when we move into our grades six through eight, we have what we call performance tasks. And that's really a multi-step problem that integrates the skills that have been taught, the concepts that have been taught, and real-life skills. And so I won't reveal any of those, Nicole, but I was looking at a few this evening, and they certainly are very complex and probably take the children close to a period to probably complete because they're very complex. And then they also have their NWEA. So when students are not performing on these benchmarks at the grade level that we expect them to form, then what we do is we create a differentiated instructional record that we call a DIR. So the RTI process is just filled with acronyms. But three times a year, a grade level will come together, and they'll look at that data, and they'll have a conversation about how their class is performing and how the individual students are performing within their class. It's important for me as well because I meet with the coordinators. So when these benchmark assessments go through, I meet with the coordinators, and we look at it from the high level. We look at it across three schools to see are there any patterns that we might be seeing? Are we seeing that maybe the kids didn't do well on a certain item, on a test item? So maybe that's more about a test question than it is about the performance of the students. Or sometimes we identify some gap areas. So for example, I think I talked about it at budget season. We were doing our DIBELS on our kindergarten students, and we were starting to notice some gaps in phonemic awareness. And so that's something that we saw across the district at all three schools. So then it's something that we go back and we say, is it something that we're not clearly putting into our curriculum? And if not, then how do we do that? How do we make sure our kids have those phonemic awareness skills? So the USTs is a great way for us to look at not only the instruction, not only how kids are providing, but it also gives us a perspective of the curriculum and whether we're meeting the needs of all the assessments that we're doing. So if a child's not meeting that benchmark, we start with tier one. Part of the tier one instruction, we create a DIR for the student. So they identify a specific goal that they're going to work with a student on, and they're going to progress monitor for that goal. And then they're going to differentiate the instruction within their classroom. So everything is happening in the general education classroom. So we're not saying that there's a disability. We're just saying that maybe they didn't learn it the first time that we taught it, and we have to go back and reteach it. Or maybe they didn't learn it the way that we want it to teach it, and so we need to go back and do it a little bit differently the next time around. And so it's a way for us to reteach the students and progress monitor. So we allow that DIR to happen for a period of time. It's usually not a long period of time. Sometimes a teacher will say that the child made progress, and they no longer need a DIR. Or sometimes they'll say they made progress and they need another area of focus. And they do that through their formative assessments on a day-to-day basis. Every so often, though, you have the kid who's not making progress on the DIR. And so then what we go to is the next level, which is a student study team. And that's a meeting in which there's an administrator, a psychologist, usually a math or reading specialist. There's the teacher. Sometimes there's a special education teacher at the table. Sometimes there's a speech and language therapist at the table. Because now you're at a place where you want to talk about are there different strategies that we should be doing for this child to help them get to a better place in reading or get to a better place in math? And that's what we call our tier one. So sometimes the outcome of a student study team meeting could be that you're going to adjust the DIR that you have for the child, and you're going to continue to work with the child right in the general education classroom on tier one. Or you might make a decision that they need something a little bit more intense, that the general education is not working for them, and they need something a little bit different. And that's when we would go to tier two. So when you're thinking of tier two, you're now thinking of that population of kids that may be struggling with the instruction in the general education classroom, and they may need something just taught a little bit differently to them. And it's not necessarily a place. It's not a group of students, but it's more intensity of instruction. And so oftentimes, there's small groups of kids, and oftentimes, the tier two instruction is given outside of the classroom. Sometimes it's given inside the classroom. Sometimes a reading teacher will push into a general education classroom and meet with a group of kids. Sometimes a math specialist will push in and do that in the classroom. But sometimes it's also a pull-out, and they go to a small group, and they meet with a reading teacher or a math specialist. And so when you're talking about tier two, you're talking about specialized instruction. And this is where it's really critical that we have reading specialists, math specialists, counselors, social workers, psychologists in your building prepared to meet the needs of kids in the classroom. So our reading specialists and math specialists, they play a huge role. So not only do they work with the general education teachers to ensure that curriculum is being implemented with fidelity, not only do they meet with them to make sure that they're differentiating their instruction for kids, but then they're also specially trained to work with kids who might be having difficulties in this area and need more intense instruction. So the reading specialists in the state of Connecticut actually have a special certification to be a reading specialist. In New Canaan here, our reading specialists are all trained in foundations, and they're also all trained in Orton-Gillingham. So they've gone through that intense training in a research-based reading methodology. Some of our reading specialists are also trained in Wilson Reading Program, and some are also trained in Lynda Mood Bell Reading Programs. They have a plethora of trainings because you never know what kids might need in order to progress in reading. The foundations and that Orton-Gillingham really is going to approach the skills in reading. It's going to approach the phonics, that phonemic awareness, that fluency that kids are struggling with. When you start to move into comprehension, there's really no comprehension program out there. There's no research-based comprehension, but there's a research-based comprehension strategies that you utilize to teach kids, whether it's visualization or reciprocal teaching. And so the kids will receive intense instruction in those areas as well. And then the same holds true in the area of math. You have math specialists who don't have to have a special certification in the state of Connecticut, although there are some certifications that allow them to get math certification for eight. And then they also are trained in research-based strategies. There's no one program in the area of math. So it's really talking about that content and those practice standards, that visualization. Sometimes it's read, draw, and write. It's teaching kids a variety of strategies to learn the math skills that they need in order to be successful in general ed. And then there's our social, emotional, and behavioral. So that's looking at those report card indicators. It's looking at nurse referrals. It's looking at attendance. It's looking at discipline referrals. It's looking at discipline referrals. And then when you have kids that are just not able to follow those behavior expectations in a classroom or struggling with anxiety, that's where we might use a counselor, a social worker, or psychologist. And they've obviously all been trained in evidence-based strategies. So after a period of time, they don't live in tier two for long periods. You set up a timeframe for them to come back and be reviewed at the student study team. So they have a goal that they've established for their SST plan and then they come back and they report on that goal. And at that meeting, you make a decision. Maybe the tier two completely ends. They've made enough progress on their goal. They no longer need that intense instruction and they just continue on with their general education instruction that they get in the classroom. That's the ultimate goal, is to correct the issue that might be happening, teach them a different way, and be able to return it back to the general ed. Sometimes you decide that the tier two instruction is going to continue. You might adjust the goal, you might adjust how you're progress monitoring, and you're just going to continue with that tier two instruction. And then sometimes you decide that you're going to go to tier three. And that's the next level of response to intervention. Now, at any one time, I don't want you to think that we don't refer to special ed. So at any one time, you might have someone that says, despite all that I'm doing, the child's just not making the progress that they need to be making and I think there might be something else going on. And then you might have a referral that goes over to special ed. So I don't want people to think that you have to go through tier one and then tier two and then tier three before you can get to special ed. At any time, you might be evaluated for special ed based on the expertise of people that are sitting around that table and really evaluating whether they're making the progress that the child should be making or not. So then you move into the tier three. And tier three, once again, you're still getting that specialized instruction, but now you might be increasing the frequency of how often they're getting that specialized instruction. Or you might be increasing the duration. So maybe instead of 15 minutes, they're getting 30 minutes of that instruction. Or instead of two times a week, maybe they're getting it three times a week. So it's increasing that intensity. And then once again, you go back and you review at the SST and you determine whether they should continue on with tier three instruction or whether they go back to tier two or whether they're completely done with their response to intervention altogether. So really, when you look at the Framework for Student Achievement, we're really looking at the cycle of instruction, which entails effective instruction, ongoing assessment, and intentional planning of lessons and learning experiences for all of our students. This is our responsibility of general education. We must look at the individual needs within our classroom. It's our responsibility to differentiate that instruction for students. That differentiation sometimes could be for product, for process, and when appropriate, even for content. So you differentiate based on what the needs are of that student. You then take a look at what are the intentional groupings that you might have within your classroom to address all the needs within your class? So are you giving direct instruction? Are you making flexible groups? Are you doing strategy groups or guided groups or collaborative experiences or independent experiences? And each of those have different meanings to teachers. So when you're talking about a strategy group, it might be talking about a specific skill that you're teaching kids to learn to read. When you're talking about a guided group, you might be talking about pulling a group of kids together that are all reading at the same level and now I'm teaching them the skills that they need to get to the next reading level. Because we're always looking to progress our students in our reading levels. And then it's the educator's responsibility to create a learning environment that's responsive to and respectful of the academic and behavioral needs of students with different backgrounds and interests and performance levels. And that's where it's important that the teacher continue to implement the school-wide behavioral expectations and then provide explicit and clear instruction in emotional intelligence. So it's all of these things that come together that really summarize our RTI guidebook, which is probably about 100 pages in 20 minutes or less. So here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Dr. Grunty. Great presentation. Erica, question?
Can you talk about writing and how writing fits? Because I noticed that reading and math isn't here, but writing is also a major assessment area in elementary and I'm just wondering how it fits into the response to intervention.
Sure. So with writing, it's a little bit more vague in elementary schools. So when you start to move into the third and fourth grade, you might have a writing prompt, which means that it's on-demand. So the kids will be given something that they'll need to write about. They'll given a period of time that they have to write to. And then they'll go back and they'll analyze that for grammar, for sentence structure, for paragraph structure. And then they'll move into elaboration and certainly as they move into the higher levels as moving into eighth grade. When you start to move into the middle school, you're now also taking a look at not only on-demand writing prompts that they have to do, but then also the response to reading. And so that plays a factor. But we all know that the first thing is they have to learn to speak, then they learn to read, and then writing is the last factor that comes in. And so we always are looking at writing, but, and we have writing specialists in all the buildings, but believe it or not, it's not one of the areas that the state of Connecticut has outlined in their RTI. It is something in New Canaan that we do because we care about how our kids learn to write.
Jill, can I add just a little bit to that? So the, and we focused, rightfully so, on the elementary, but RTI does go K-12 as we think about, and probably the worst acronym of all time, the DIR.
Right.
Is, you know, we do have those even for high school students. So as they mature and as the complexity grows, we have the Writing Center at the high school, for instance. So students will be asked to go visit the Writing Center when, after they've turned in essays or other things. And on some assignments, the teachers will require students to go to the Writing Center before that gets turned in. So that's sort of a, you know, I wouldn't call it tier two necessarily, but it's an additional support for students. And if somebody is struggling, that's a place where they may even be scheduled to go as one of their periods for a quarter or a semester or something to get that help. So and we've also got Math Center and other things at the high school, so it does continue right all the way up through.
Yes, thank you. Good point.
Great, thanks.
Other questions? Brennan?
Is the Literacy Academy something that could help us in RTI? Or is it more helping with tier two and tier three? Or will it actually help us identify and fix issues?
So the Literacy Academy is going to help special education students. So RTI is trying to identify whether students are having curriculum gaps or instructional gaps. And that's really the responsibility of RTI. So you want to exhaust everything in general education to make sure that you don't move a child forward to a referral for special education. They get an identification, but the identification was really because there were instructional gaps. So a great example of that is after COVID. We had to be very careful that we weren't moving kids into a referral process for special education. We had to make sure that they weren't experiencing difficulties in particular areas because of an instructional gap. And so the real role of response to intervention is to exhaust everything in general education in hopes that you don't have the over-identification of special education students. And so it's really trying to make sure that the kids that are moving to that referral process are kids who truly have dyslexia or learning disabilities. I think also what's important is the RTI process will also help to pick up some of the early warning signs that kids might have dyslexia, so that you're not waiting until fourth grade and then everything falls apart for the child and then you're moving them to the referral of special ed. So in the last few years, we've really implemented like the DIBELS and the foundations as a way to really take a look at the skills that we're teaching in those K through three years to try to make sure that you're doing everything to close a gap, not have an instructional gap. And that when a child is moving over to special ed and when they become identified for special ed, it's truly because they have a disability.
Yeah, that was, that was sort of my question, that last piece, which is, you know, are the specialists able to help our, you know, general education teachers identify and fix those issues as we go along?
Right. And that's why we felt so strongly about making sure that our reading specialists are also trained in Orton-Gillingham, so they have that research-based methodology. Because actually, when you go to identify a child for special ed, and I know Bill will be talking about this next session, but there's checklists that you have to actually follow when you go to qualify a child for dyslexia or learning disabled. And you have to say that you gave that child a research-based reading methodology before they moved over to special ed. And you have to document that you actually gave them that intense instruction by somebody who is trained in a specific reading, research-based methodology before they can even be identified for special ed.
And even when, Dr. Grunty said that while a student is in RTI, they can also be referred to special education, which is true. But when we start to look at, is this a learning disability, part of the checklist that Dr. Grunty mentioned, we have to go back and then justify and say, oh yes, this student did have, you know, direct instruction using a scientifically research-based method. We can't identify a student as learning disabled until they've kind of gone through that process so that we're not over-identifying students.
Makes sense.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand a little bit more at the high school level. You know, I understand going to the Writing Center, Math Center, et cetera, but how does it work on a, on a kind of a broader level, whether it's communicating with families or, you know, that, that sort of thing? If a student's having recurring issues and has to, you know, go through this RTI process?
So oftentimes, the students, as they're transitioning from eighth to ninth grade, there's transition meetings. And so the information is shared about those eighth graders that may, sometimes kids go in and out of RTI too. And those are sometimes patterns that you need to be watchful of as well. So you might have somebody who's heading off to high school who has gone in RTI, then they were out of RTI, then they're back in RTI. So those are all part of that transition meeting when you're moving into high school and you're deciding whether somebody should have Reading Center or whether they should have the Writing Center or the Math Center as part of their schedule. And then once they're in high school, it is going back and looking at those assessments and having conversations about those individual needs and then having conversations with the student and the parents to just say, I think it's time that we recommend the Reading Center or we recommend the Writing Center. And then it becomes part of their schedule and then they go to that class for the special support that they need. At high school though, they are required to differentiate their instruction as well. And that's part of also moving into that block to give them more opportunities to differentiate, to pull small groups and do guided groups and strategy groups right within their classrooms. And I know that they're always looking at their writing assessments. They come together and they will score their writing assessments together so that they're talking about the students. And sometimes they'll even blind score them. So you'll give it a score, I'll give it a score, and then we compare and see are we on the same page with our scores? If we're off more than two points, then usually it goes to a third reader and then they blindly score it. But it's all those things that they're closely examining and making sure that the kids are moving forward.
I would only just very briefly add, the school counselors also are a key piece at the high school that aren't, don't serve necessarily the same role as you go in the elementary and others, where they sort of, they can see the whole picture of a child. So if somebody is worried or has a bunch, wants to talk to somebody about their child and how they're doing and supports, the school counselor would be a good avenue for that as well.
I have a couple of questions. So for a student, let's say at Saks, for example, how does, how does RTI translate for a student who has, you know, struggling in either reading or math? When you're thinking about like science or social studies where some of those challenges would carry over into those classrooms?
So certainly they use, they will sometimes use that workshop block of time to help teach the kids the strategies that might be helpful to them. I think also one of the responsibilities that we talk about in science and social studies all the time is sharing reading levels with those core teachers so that when they're handing out articles that need to be read, they're picking articles that are at a varied level so that the kids are still receiving the content in the science, but they might be reading an article that's at a different lexile than somebody else within the classroom. And that's how you can help to still teach the content, but to provide them the supports that they might need. So the social studies teachers, the science teachers are aware of the kids that are within RTI and that need that support. And oftentimes, it might be Sarah and Melinda meeting together to talk about the lexile and to try to find the appropriate resources for that child. We struggle a lot with our ELL students even. So it's how do we provide those materials that will help them to be able to have conversations in the classroom and still be part of the content that's being taught, but also at a level that they're reading and understanding. And so the communication with the coordinators is really critical when they're talking about students.
Great, thank you. And you actually touched on my next question, which is the ELL learners. And could you just, could you speak to just the differentiation along the continuum for RTI for those students who, you know, their primary challenge, I assume initially, is the language barrier and then how that carries over?
So oftentimes when we have, and I can think of a specific example of a fourth grader that recently arrived that was not a Native American English speaker. And oftentimes, it's really coming together as a group of people. And so it's putting the right people in the room together to talk about the student and what the student's needs are. So oftentimes, you'll see the reading coordinator, the math coordinator, sometimes the writing coordinator, you'll see the classroom teacher, you'll see the reading specialist, math specialist, writing specialist. Usually Lizette, myself, an administrator, are all sitting in the room trying to create the action plan for this child. And then it's right, trying to figure out what's the best thing and the best way to approach teaching this child to learn to accumulate to the language. So the first thing is the vocabulary and you're just pushing as much vocabulary and pictures. And the technology's been really useful in that regard. It's getting vocabulary words so that now they're seeing the word in English. Sometimes we can get the word in their native language and sometimes it's the door. And so what's it in the native language? What's it in English? It's right on top of the door. And the kids in the classrooms often love to help out other kids to learn to speak English. And then certainly as they begin to progress, it gets more challenging as you're teaching them to read. And oftentimes with the math, it's a struggle as well because so much of our math is language-based. So they feel really successful when you can give them those computation problems, but then as soon as you're introducing those word problems, it's how do you teach them those strategies? We also have ELL tutors who work specifically with kids as well. So it's really a coordination of all those efforts. And so you may recall a few years back when we asked for an ELL coordinator. And that ELL coordinator is that person who really helps to coordinate. And then we do progress monitoring. It's our responsibility to follow RTI, to come back, to see, is the EL plan that we've created helping the student to make progress?
I remember a presentation not too long ago from Lizette, who does this work, where she was sharing with, with the board that the most complex language for EL students to pick up is academic language. So they may, they'll get conversational, they'll understand the language in some way. But the complexity of academic language, which is directive and what have, it can take, she said, sometimes seven plus years for students to advance far enough where they can be dismissed from EL because they've advanced in that acquisition of academic language. So it's, it's a very complex field in and of itself.
And sometimes we have to make choices. So, you know, you have to make a choice. Are they going to be in the social studies classroom for the full block of time or they might get removed from the social studies classroom and that's when they might be getting some of their EL support so that they're getting that academic language or getting the, just simple vocabulary that they might need to be successful?
Thank you. Julie?
Do you ever find students feeling dejected if they are going from tier one back to general ed, then back to tier two, back and forth? Do they?
So they're always part of general ed. So I don't want you, so they're, we try not to pull them during those core academic blocks of time. So the kids are actually in the classroom for the general education reading instruction. And when you're talking about a tier two plan, oftentimes, it's really coordinated. So the general education teacher is working specifically on one goal where the reading specialist is going to be working on a separate goal. And so the reading specialist might be working on some really intense Orton-Gillingham instruction for the child and the classroom teacher is working completely on the comprehension. So they're working on the decodable readers that we have within classrooms and they're still working on the comprehension and the unit of study so that they still feel like they're a part of that classroom. At the elementary level, it's amazing, kids come and go out of classrooms all the time and they don't really think anything of it. And then when they move to Saks, it becomes periods. And so it's just, period six, I go to this room. Period seven, I go here. And so they kind of follow a schedule in that regard. But we're always sensitive to students' social, emotional needs. And sometimes you do have to have conversations with kids and explain to them that this is how you're going to learn and this is going to help you. And you really do have to have that conversation because as they get older, they know that something's different and that they're seeing things differently than... something's different, and that they're seeing things differently than their peers.
Dan?
Do you, are we able to like, track the numbers, I guess, in tier one, tier two, tier three, over time, like, year to year, to compare, like, where you see fluctuations, as well as kind of across each of the three components, kind of literacy, numeracy, and SEL, just like, if there's certain years where, like, oh, we've identified a lot more people in tier two in literacy, and we're attacking it, or like, a certain social emotional component?
Yep. We actually do track the kids. So when they create a DIR, it actually goes into our Power School, which is where we house our report cards. And so it's a confidential database, which allows the general education teacher to go in and make a change to the DIR, but it also allows like, a social studies teacher or somebody else to see if a child has a DIR, and also where are tier two and tier three plans. So it's all tracked in Power School. You can run a report to see who has a DIR. You can run a report to see who's getting literacy support, math support. We can run our report card indicators to see, is there a particular area that all second graders are not performing well on? And there are some times where you run into a cohort of kids, and then you're trying to backtrack to say, what's different about this cohort, and why might this be happening? And sometimes you see it just in a pocket. It might be one elementary school, and not all elementary schools. So you're seeing different pockets of kids. But that's a way that we track it to, and we always are looking to see, you know, are we reducing our numbers? You know, you don't want to have 20% of your kids sitting in tier two or tier three. That's not the goal. So you're always looking to see if those numbers are low.
Have you seen anything over the last, kind of, like, this, either this year or last year, that you feel like has been fluctuating positively or negatively?
I think that we're working through instructional gaps in all areas, you know, and I think we're fortunate, because we were in school all of last year, and we were for the majority of the time. But are there instructional gaps? Yes. You know, were teachers teaching differently in their classrooms last year? They were. Were they pulling less small groups? Were they doing less one-on-one conferring because of COVID, and the limitations that they might have had of how many kids they could pull to a table? You know, were they creative? Sometimes it was on the floor, sometimes it was spread out. So they were very creative. Now you're seeing the teachers right back in, you know, they want their carpets back, they want their tables back, they want to put the kids back into groups. They're back to that natural way of how they go about teaching. And so you see it differently. And when you have that difference in instruction with small groups, and guided groups, and strategy groups, it's always going to impact what happens overall. Are we seeing everything kind of starting to level off again for us? We are. Like I said, I think what was most glaring in the fall for us was the phonemic awareness with our kindergartners. And that could have been the impact from their preschool programs. So they may have not been in the preschool programs as much as they were in the years past, or they may not have been doing all those little skills that they normally do. So it was our responsibility to try to address that and close that gap.
Yeah, I would just, just to add just a bit, one of the metrics of a successful RTI program is your identification into special education, right? Because there is a strong connection there, that is, if you have a successful RTI program, then the students will receive the interventions that they need in the general ed classroom, and sort of loop back. When we look at our special ed identification, and Bill will talk about this more at our next meeting, but, you know, we train to add or below typically where the rest of the DIR is, where the rest of the state, and I think that's a sign of the program working the way it's designed, it's intended for.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, I guess, at the different stages where you're doing, where you're kind of going through, doing the benchmark assessments, and kind of going, and deciding if you need to have a DIR, or, I guess, also across different tiers?
Right.
When do you, or in like, what format does that get communicated to parents? Is it, I'm sure, like, report cards part of it, but there's probably, like, is it tier one, is it communicated, or is it more if it's a tier two or tier three? I'm just trying to understand how they get brought into that discussion, and kind of know, I guess, what goals, what specific goals might be being targeted, and how that's tracked and everything?
So when students are not meeting the benchmarks, then obviously, there's communication with the parents. And so oftentimes, remember that tier one is general education. It's what happens on a day-to-day basis. And sometimes, teachers are creating DIRs for the kids to work on a specific skill. And so they might be communicating to the parent that they're working on, you know, short vowel sounds, or they might be working on reading more fluently, or more accurately, or putting expression, or whatever scooping it might be. So that communication happens with parents right after USTs happen, when benchmark assessments are happening, when formative assessments. It's their responsibility as a teacher to call that parent, because ultimately, if you get to the student's study team level, then now it's the reading specialist and the teacher calling the parent. And you don't want the parent to be like, why is a reading specialist all of a sudden calling me? Like, what happened? So that communication has to be ongoing, so that then the teacher's calling the parent to say, you know, they're not making the same amount of progress that I would expect them to make. I want the reading specialist to take a look at them, and to start working with them. And then the reading specialist jumps in, talks with the parent, and explains what they're going to be working with them on. And the communication to the parents is critical. You always have to go back and give them progress towards the goals that they're making. You never want any surprises.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, Bob?
Thanks, Jill. So on the math and the reading, it's sort of the assessment path, and some of the data points seem really easy to capture. Can you talk about, how do you do that with SAPPLE? Like, where does the assessment piece, it feels very subjective to me, so I'm trying to understand, is it, or is it more data-driven?
It's very soft data.
Yeah.
So it is subjective. So we do have a rubric that we use for the report cards. So when we're going to look at the SAPPLE indicator on following written and oral tasks, for examples, we have what a beginning would look like, what a satisfactory would look like, what a usual would look like, and what a consistent would look like. And so the teachers, and that's the grades that they get on the elementary report cards, they don't get letter grades, it's, you know, it's the beginning stages, or that satisfactory. And so the teachers do have a rubric that they use to try to figure out where the child is, but once again, it's soft data, and it's somewhat subjective. I think what happens is when you're starting to move more into that tier two, that's where you're really thinking about the kids that have more of a discipline issue, and they're really struggling to follow those classroom routines. And despite the little behavior plan that I put in place, or the little tokens, or the little positive reinforcement that I'm giving to the child, it's just not working. Or the skills that I'm teaching, you know, to problem solve, and figure out a way to not get mad when we're playing the four-square game, despite the EI, and teaching the meta moment, and everything, it's just not working. And so that's when you bring it to that next level.
And those next levels, I mean, with reading and math, again, I can see specialists and things, but I would think, once you're in the SAPPLE arena, it's really leaning on the parents to kind of work with you on that.
It really is. It's a coordination with the parents, and then usually, it's in groups. It's rare that you're seeing a psychologist, or a social worker, counselor, seeing a child one-on-one. It's usually more in a group together, where you might be working on social skills together. You might be working on stress-less groups that we have in middle school. So it's different ways. But it's always that ongoing communication with the parents, because you're always trying to figure out, why is the child having these behaviors? And if I can figure out the why, then I can try to put the strategies in place to have them be successful.
Right.
And sometimes, to have those counselors and those social workers, they're able to look at it a little bit differently from the classroom teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Great discussion. All right, next up, we have an update on the budget. We're almost there.
We are almost there. Yep, knock on plastic. Just a brief update for the board, and glad to go into as much detail as you like, but just to let you know, we had a meeting with our town council last week, and we, actually, we attended the meeting with the town council last week, and we were there to answer any questions, but they didn't have any, because they had their discussion. They really outlined a couple of capital projects that they wanted to get, sort of go a little deeper on, and discuss amongst themselves. They felt good about our operating budget, and feel like it's a reasonable request as we're moving forward. At least that was the sense I received as we were there. The two capital projects that they wanted to discuss a little bit more for the Board of Ed were the Planetarium and the Innovation Project. And as they went around, and sort of took a straw poll, it seemed like there was strong support for both in the end, so that's positive news. This morning, there was a meeting with the Audit Committee that Dr. Keating and I attended. They were asking about the budget process. They wanted more information about the Internal Services Fund, so we'll be sure to share that information with them, and, you know, answer any questions for the Audit Committee as well. Tomorrow night, we have another meeting with the Town Council, and anticipate that they'll be finalizing and approving the budget tomorrow night. If you're thinking about the experiences that we've had along the way with the Town Council, they seem to be, they've asked a lot of questions, and they seem to be satisfied with the answers that we've been able to provide for them. So I anticipate, again, knock on wood, but that should go successfully tomorrow night. And then, that finishes the budget approval process, and then it goes back to the Board of Finance to determine mil rate, and how they'll be funding. But it's, the budget at that point is established, so then we would, you know, go forward with any changes or any adjustments we need to make, and then be able to bring it back to you, as the Board of Ed, to discuss, and sort of lock it in, and plan forward into the 22, 23 school year.
Thank you. I'll send around the details for that meeting tomorrow night, too.
Sure, that's helpful.
Okay, we'll move on to our action items. First is the 23, 24 school district calendar. So there is a motion to approve this on the table. There are a couple of follow-up areas that we were going to discuss tonight. One was the potential, there was, Bob suggested considering adding the October holiday for Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then spring break timing was also discussed. So I don't know if you have a share, any updates on that?
You know, I shared it in the Friday update a bit. I mean, there's a mix around the region. I did speak with some, a couple of different groups of parents. I had some opportunity to just touch base with them, get some feedback. There was some concern about the parents' work schedules versus kids' school schedules, right? And if we don't have school on that day, then there are parents in town that have to figure out the coverage for their children. So that was a piece of feedback that I received. Also, and the Board had mentioned earlier in the conversation about, sort of, that's the decision, shouldn't be annual, but if we're going to do that day, then we should anticipate doing it going forward. And looking at this calendar, just as a reminder, typically, there is, more often than not, a second holiday, Jewish holiday, in September. This year, the 23, 24 year, it's on a Saturday, so it doesn't, it's not a day off from school, but generally, that day is in there as well. So the, some conversation about sort of October and March as the only two months that are kind of solid blocks of instruction for, you know, with kids. And just the other piece that came back was just some conversation about, you know, the decision to come to school on Veterans Day, which we did years ago, where students learn about, and have programming around that. And somebody said, well, they don't have their holiday off, which was St. Patrick's Day. So just sort of saying, there's some holidays that we have off, some holidays that we're in school. And that was the, was the feedback that I received from them. So asking my colleagues, again, it's pretty split, as you saw, across the region. I threw it out a little bit broader to get some feedback, but really haven't had great results. So it's, you know, I asked 25 people, I got maybe six back, so that's not really worth sharing. But I looked at the calendars throughout the region, as you saw, and it was about 50/50. That's a little bit of feedback there.
Great. And then anything on the spring break?
Oh, sure. So on the spring break, actually, the principals and the cabinet had a conversation about spring break a bit. And what we kept going back to was the challenge of where Easter falls in March, and that the concern that if the spring break was a week earlier, so as you see, it's the week of the 15th in the calendar here, if it were to become the week of the 8th, there's a concern about the quality of instruction that week of the 1st after Easter. Attendance isn't always great the day after Easter, and if it's the Easter weekend, and then there's the week off the following week. A few of the parents shared that they know that there'd be some temptation to take the week. And the, not going to ask for any hand. But even speaking with the principals, talking a little bit, it was about, again, a block of instructional time, and it's an important time, of course. And so they're feeling that having the two-week buffer between would help instructionally to be able to get the kids and the families back, and then take the break after that. So that was the feedback from both parents and the principals. No names were used in the conversation at any time, I promise you.
We're not making eye contact.
So that was that.
Well, thank you. That's all helpful. Okay, so I'll open it up for some discussion, if anyone has any thoughts, and then we'll take a vote. Brendan?
Yeah, I mean, I think the rationale makes sense. I think, you know, looking at the beginning and the end of the school year, it always seems like things are stretched, you know, and sort of compressed. So I personally like the way this is laid out, without, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day as a separate break, you know, or holiday that we would take off. And I think the rationale around spring break makes a lot of sense, just looking at the calendar. So I would keep it as proposed, you know, and make sure that we're able to, you know, have those key stretches of instructional time.
You raising your hand?
Yeah.
Oh, Julie, okay.
I think being a federal holiday, it makes sense to have it off. And just, I read a lot about it this week, and I think, I think having it, if we do move to have it off, I think calling it Indigenous People and Columbus Day, just kind of inclusive of both holidays, would be a wise move.
Okay. Other comments, feedback? Dan?
So I, on the spring break timing, I think that, I think the rationale does make a lot of sense. So, and then on adding in, I guess, if we were to add in Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, what, would the 12th, June 12th go to the 13th?
Yes. Yep, that would add one day on, that would be the 182.
Penny?
So I guess I would be in favor of approving the calendar as presented. You know, overall the last, most of the last few years, we've actually had to vote and take, to accept two less school days. And I always feel a little bit of reluctance when I do that, because I know how valuable every single day is. So adding in another day off, I think is just going to increase the likelihood that we're going to continue to have to shorten the school year. And I think we had gotten parents used to not having kids in school for Indigenous persons, or Columbus Day, or whatever we're calling it. I think that's worked really well. We haven't gotten much negative feedback to it. So I would, my vote would be to go with the calendar as presented.
Thank you, Penny. Erica?
Can you explain, so if we were to include this holiday, and that moves out the end of the calendar one more day, and let's say it's a year where we have more than three snow days, or more than four snow days, does this mean that we are increasing the likelihood that we then move into the week of the 17th? Or how does that work in terms of the impact of multiple, more than a couple of snow days? What's the threshold? And does it increase the likelihood that we're then moving into that next week of June?
Well, it does in that, we build a calendar with 182 days, right? We don't build in extra days that we then don't use if we don't need them. So when we say the last day would be the 12th or the 13th, that's the 182nd day for students. And then if, so every day we had would push that out, right? So if the 12th is the last day, then there are two snow days, or closings, because there have been hurricanes, or power outages, or we've had buildings flood before, things like that. So I'll just say sort of general closings. If we had three general closings, then that would push that over to the 17th automatically. Now, the Board of Ed has a policy that we would work to not go beyond the third full week in June, right? So that third full week in June would be Friday, the 21st, and be at that point that we would look to take days from April, and take them out of the April break, and try to adhere to that policy. Now, the state of Connecticut says you have to use every day available in June, and other days, too, in order to meet the 180 threshold as a minimum. So, you know, if we went, if something happened, like the hurricanes that we had, that shut down school for a week at a time, and things like that. down school for a week at a time and things like that, then we would be talking about, you know, the last possible day to go to school in this year would be June 28th and would have to be. But we would take steps before that if they were available to us, shortening the school year to 180 from 182. Or in the past, we have taken days out of the April break. And the conversation becomes you take it from the beginning of the break or the end of the break. And we've done that before. They are, they are. Those are the extreme weather scenarios. The, you know, we had two years in a row where we had hurricanes right around Halloween, where we had Halloween closed all those times. And then the one big storm that came back in 2011 that kept school closed for about 10 days in the beginning of the year.
So.
But it is, it's a one-to-one, I guess, is the, is the big takeaway.
Yeah. So as the calendar stands right now, we have two more days in that second June week, plus we could shorten from 182 to 180. So that's essentially four days. If we had a year where we had five days of closure, then we're facing a situation of either going into the third week of June or taking days from April.
Yeah, and in truth, I mean, we would certainly discuss it. I don't know that I'd recommend shortening the school year from 182 to 180 just because we're in the third week. I would certainly do that if we're looking at the fourth, you know, or certain, depending on the year itself. But, you know, again, we try not to do that. We've done that maybe two or three times, you know, in my eight years as superintendent. We try not to.
Yeah.
Because those days are valuable.
Because I'm just concerned people do make plans and have expectations on the basis of our calendar, and that people might reasonably think, oh, well, by the 14th, you know, even if we have some snow days, we're definitely done. But we could face a scenario where we're going into that next week, and then people are, you know, people have made plans on the basis of this, are then disrupted by that. So we increase that likelihood if we add another day. That was kind of what I was trying to get to, is that that is the potential impact or could be a potential impact of adding an extra day.
Okay. I'm inclined to keep it as-is. I, I mean, I did think about it, and, you know, September, you don't, we don't always know the days, you know, it depends on the two Jewish holidays, but you have the, you know, you always have Labor Day, and then you have two other days off. So, I don't know, my sense is that October is when you kind of hit the ground running. And I think, you know, everyone's kind of ready, the weather's nice, everyone's happy to be in school, and the risk of, you know, adding more, taking away from summer sort of stands in the way of, in my mind, adding, you know, a day off in October. So that's, those are my thoughts. Any other thoughts? Bob, yeah, go ahead.
I obviously wanted it, so I'll say I was in favor for it. I just think it's a long stretch. Pretty much every other month, you have at least one day off. So that seemed like the logical choice.
Okay, sure. Bill?
Yeah, I would just add to that. I think when you just said hit the ground running, I think they end up running for a while there. That just looks like a, it looks like a long stretch to me. So I'd be in favor of a ban in the day next year and obviously going forward.
Before we vote, can I just, not Columbus, Indigenous People Day. Dr. Lettsi, you mentioned Veterans Day and how the kids go into school and learn about veterans. And I know Wes did an awesome presentation this year where families submitted videos and they showed it in school, and it was great. I also, I went to the God's Acre Ceremony this year, and it was, it was really touching. I don't know if there's a high school group that normally goes. I know they weren't really doing field trips or anything, but just something to think about. It was really, really great what the town put on.
Yeah, we have programs at all of our schools on Veterans Day. You know, different, obviously age-appropriate, different at each level. Get the community members involved, veterans of different wars involved, coming talking to their kids a little bit. And sometimes they'll do parades down the hallways, things like that with the veterans.
Okay, so I mean, I guess the only other comment I would add, and just thinking about all this, too, is that we've discussed if we do it, it's not just a, you know, an annual decision. So I hesitate, given the fact that I really haven't received feedback in my, in my time, negative feedback about not having that time off. So I have some hesitation in, you know, sort of making a long-term commitment without sort of broader sense of, you know, where parents are and kids are on that. So I'll just add that point. Yep.
I would say that, like, when we start out with school, so usually it's a, it's a work holiday, so it was like a long weekend that people would travel or do something. So I would just say from, like, with my board hat off and my parent hat on, it was, it's definitely a nice, long weekend to have, kind of in the, in the fall, that I think some families would take a lot of advantage of, so.
I just, I think on that, the other side of that is a lot of people don't have that day off. And so that's the, you know, we'd be putting that burden on families to take care of their kids that day. And I think, I don't know, I don't know if it's increasingly or not, but it does seem like, you know, that, that holiday isn't necessarily a holiday for a lot of folks, so.
Okay.
To that point, I do, I did like, like the way Julie, like, you can call it Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, just as far as to be the most kind of inclusive. I think that that has some legs if we do go that route, so.
Yeah, just, just on that, I think we're supposed to be educated about, you know, what the day means, why Columbus, what Columbus did, what, you know, the day represents. So if we want to go down that route and as a board, call it one thing or the other, we're supposed to, you know, talk about it, hear from people who actually, you know, study Columbus, for example, and make a decision after that.
I just, I just went to the website, but I think for the federal government, I think it's still called Columbus Day, and I think for Connecticut, it's still called Columbus Day, so.
Okay.
This is for the USPS, too. Postal Service.
Okay, so I think the first decision is, are we taking the day off? Are we observing a day off in October? And then we could talk about, maybe the second part of that conversation is, you know, what, and I don't know that one has, the other has to happen right now, but let's, in order to finalize the calendar, let's make that decision. So if we're going to, I think the motion, a motion would need to be made to add that as a consideration.
To amend, amend the current motion on the table to include October 9th in 2023.
Okay, so Bob made the motion, Julie second. Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Julie, Bob, Dan, Phil, opposed? Penny, Erica, Brendan, Katrina.
Hugo.
Okay, so the motion fails. Great. And then we're going to leave, I think it's all, all okay with leaving spring break where it is?
Yep.
Okay, great. So with that, we'll vote to approve the 2023-2024 school district calendar as moved by Ms. Schudel, seconded by Mr. Nanton, as proposed. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, everyone. People can start planning.
Get it on the website.
Great, thank you. Next up is the All Sports Booster Club donation.
Which should be a much easier vote. The, the All Sports Booster Club is, once again, generously donating funds to help us to supplement our program. As you saw, they are looking to make a donation of $7,560 to help to pay for the winter strength and conditioning program that we had here at the high school. It's really to provide stipends for the folks who did the supervision for our, for our kids. And, excuse me, we talk about sort of tier one, two, three, as the kids are in these programs, have fitness records that they use. It's all very well organized and managed and really impressive stuff. And it all sort of helps our kids to stay connected, to work on, in the off-season, to stay with their teams and build those healthy habits while in school and after. It's good stuff.
Yeah, good stuff indeed. I think it's great for injury prevention and just feeds into a lot of other great health support. All right, so is there a motion to approve a donation of $7,650 from the All Sports Booster Club to help fund supervision for the winter strength and conditioning program at New Kane and High School? Phil, second, Dan, all in favor? And I'll add a big thank you to the All Sports Booster Club.
Absolutely.
All right. Comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on.
It must be spring break next week.
Yeah.
That's great. And.
Announcements in future business.
Yeah, yep. Friday, we start our spring break, so wish everyone safe travel and enjoy, if you're going anywhere, if you're staying here. Enjoy what hope, what looks to be some good weather, so that's what I keep hearing. And at our next Board of Education meeting, the bill will be sharing us, with us, an overview of our special education program, which, as you saw tonight, and you'll see next time we meet, flows very well from the RTI process and the interconnection there around sort of meeting students where they are and giving them the sort of interventions and support they need to be successful, so.
Great, thank you for that.
And a budget update. Hopefully short and sweet.
Hopefully. Great, and I would just add our, my wishes for everyone to have a great, both on the board and our community, a wonderful, restful, and happy spring break, so. And motion to adjourn. Brendan, second, Erica, all in favor? All right, thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Go home and watch the championship.